Morrissey.
Here.
Or, excuse me, Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Voise.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
Motion to adjourn is proposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, first on the agenda is the presentation of the fiscal year 2020 library budget. And I think we have the esteemed Steve Nielsen with us to do that. So turn it over to you, and you have thirty minutes.
We've got fifteen slides. We'll get, we'll, we just find, so.
Good.
Again, I stuck to the script. Our mission statement, I think, will be up on the screen shortly, maybe, to provide access to education, information, recreation, and a welcoming environment. The goals of the library and things that we do there circulate print and electronic material, provide information seekers assistance, offer free education, information, or recreational programming, provide outreach to community organizations and the homebound, equips users with important technology solutions, and hosts meetings and events for outside organizations. So those are pretty straightforward. We were asked to include our org chart. We've been debating if we have twenty-nine point five people or twenty-nine point two three people at the library, but this is how it's made up. And you can see that we have some managers and then everybody reports below them, very thin. Remember, we're open sixty-one hours a week, so these are the people that represent all of that. One of our biggest challenges today, and again, for all of the, of my age, we, when we grew up, the, the library just had books. And today, they have much more than books. And what this slide represents are just some of the medias that we contend with. Today, the Waterloo Public Library has seventy-three magazines online twenty-four seven. So you can go to our website, click on those, download them, read them on an airplane. If you like it, we'll actually tell you the next time it gets published, send you an email, and it's delivered right to your phone or your PC or your tablet. But we do have books, CDs, DVDs. Hoopla in the bottom middle screen here is a brand-new addition to the library. It's seven-hundred thousand books, audiobooks, and it's patron-driven acquisitions. We didn't buy all seven-hundred thousand. We give all the sixty-eight thousand residents access, and they pick what they want. So rather than us gambling that we're buying the right thing for our customers, they get to pick what they like. So that's a really cool new feature that we've added to the library.
And, but you can monitor when you're getting close to that maximum?
Oh, yeah. The way it works today is you get three per month, and so if you don't use them all, we actually send you an email toward the end of the month and say, hey, you've got some books left over. But it can be a movie, it can be a music score, it can be an ebook or an audiobook. I mean, it's any one of those things. And the nicety of that is, it's always returned on time, you never lose it, and we never fine you for it. So if you think about that, that saves us a lot of staff time, but it also provides the patrons a much better experience. Some of our statistics for this year, and if you look at them, they're kind of mind-boggling. We had two-hundred-and-fifty thousand visitors. We have thirty-nine thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-three current library card users. That means they've used the library, checked something out, or used a computer in the last three years. They're active. If they're not, we actually purge that number, so that's quite a large number. We put on eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven library programs this year. That doesn't count programs and everything that other people did in our library, that's just the ones that we sponsored. So summer reading, books, discussions, whatever, but it's almost two and a half a day. Connect is a, is a big part of our world today. We logged in the library this last year fifty-one thousand nine-hundred-and-fourteen computer sessions. That's where the public come in and use our computers for whatever reason. They may want to apply for a job, they may need to finance a house. We have a realtor that runs his real estate business out of one of our rooms every day. So we have all kinds of people using it, but fifty-one thousand uses. We have ninety-nine public internet computers, and that's a lot. But there are parts of the day where almost every one of them are filled, and it's really fun to see what they're using. The next one is really important. We also provide free high-speed internet. So we had twenty-three thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-one connections this year. That's more and more prevalent. People are coming in with their phones or laptops. We even had a young man bringing his Xbox in and plug it in, connect to our internet, and download the newest version of all of these games in the library. I'd never thought about that, but you could do that, and he did. So that's a, a unique use of our internet. Our users downloaded almost thirty thousand electronic items, and again, that's books, magazines, audio, video, music. And one of the highlights is we did a week-long Koto Dojo camp to introduce twelve, or eight fourteen-year-olds this, this summer, and it met with resounding success. Actually, it's continued on into the fall. We just had one Saturday where thirteen more kids showed up to learn how to program at the library. Exploring, again, this is, you wouldn't believe what we do on the reference, but we have answered fifty-two thousand questions. Some of those questions are pretty basic. Some of them are, why is, or where is Walmart? What hours are they open? Or my favorite this last year is, how do I get to Allen Hospital now that sixty-three is closed? You know, that's an actual question that comes in. And some of them are genealogical, or who lived at this address a hundred and fifty years, and it takes a lot of research of the librarians to do it. But again, having a team of people to answer fifty-two thousand questions. We offered over a hundred-and-eighteen workshops in our library Makerspace, and I know that all of you that were here the last two years know that we have sewing machines, we have jewelry making, we have machines that allow you to transfer your VHS over to DVD. It's sold out, sold out. We don't charge anything. I'm glad the mayor's not there. He'd say charge for that. Every time we give that, it's, what's the word? It's full. Thank you. The class is full every time. But it's really a cool activity. I just did this for my family, who was able to, my parents. I don't know why that breaks me up, but they're gone, they're gone now, but it was cool. We had nine-hundred-and-fifty-one youth summer reading program participants and a hundred-and-ninety-eight teens. Teens are really a hard demographic to go after. A lot of our peer libraries in the state are jealous of that number, so we're really proud of it. Looking forward, these are more of our challenges, and I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention here. With the, the new building going up right next to it, we've lost two-thirds of our parking, and so that is impinging on what traffic we can put into the building. We're getting told by patrons that there's just no parking. We go to another library, and you can guess which one they go to. That really hurts, when there's no parking for people to come in. This afternoon, right before I came over here, I watched two young ladies pull in and park in real high shoes, I don't know why, in this beautiful weather, and then walk right across over to single speed and take one of the twenty-four parking spaces we have for the, the public. So that really hurts, but.
Do you ever issue tickets?
Well, we have signs that say, "Library Parking," only, like, three of them in a row, front and back, but we have never issued tickets yet. I was wondering how much the fine would be, but it's disheartening. If you come in on a Sunday afternoon, and the library's not open for two hours, and our parking lot's full, you know, what do you do when the patrons, patrons actually show up, you know, for valid reasons to use the library? One of the other challenges that we have is additional meeting space. We only have two meeting rooms, and we're, good news is, we're updating them and getting them to state-of-the-art, so you can show resolutions that are available today. And we're actually working on a way that we can open up the building when we're closed to still provide the meeting room access to the public, because there are multiple weeknights where people could be using our facility, where we're already heating it, we already have electricity. We just had to figure out a way to open the meeting rooms with two people rather than ten, and we figured that out, and so that's underway. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Looking forward, and, and again, I just took this to the library board last month, is a, one of the things that, if you look at our problems, a potential solution is getting a bookmobile. And we could take the library to the community, and not just to the schools, not just to the playgrounds, but to the parks, to social events, but also to the assisted living facilities that, that we have so many in the community. So it'd be a way to get our materials out to the people that can't come and see us, but also take that program technology-wise, you know, we are the resource to how to use your phone or your tablet or whatever. Take that out there, float there, be at Irish Fest, be, have the library be wherever an event is going on. So this is a really, really positive thing. The mayor asked me to look into this. Iowa City has done it. It's, it's, it's going over like gangbusters. The only thing I can say is that the, the cost of the van isn't our challenge. I think we can fundraise that. It's the staff that needs to run it that, that I would be challenged with today. The last one to explore is to provide a vibrant, interactive, safe area for our youngest visitors. Designated programming space for our youth is really needed. It needs to be more secure, and child's side furniture. You may not, you may not think of this every day, but if your kids or your grandkids are in any big building, and they happen to be right by the front doors, that's not really where you want to keep them, because it's so easy just to grab somebody and walk out. Most public libraries have the children's department away from the front door, so the passing traffic isn't there. And that is one of our biggest problems on the first floor, is where our children's department is. And so we're looking at ways of addressing this, trying to come up with something, but it is a challenge. I worry about that every day. And, and our staff is really vigilant. I'm keeping an eye out on everybody going in there, but it only takes one. So that's one of our big challenges that I wanted to bring today. On your, on your desk, I, I put out both our annual reports, so you have a nice, high-tech, printed-in shop annual report with all the numbers that I quoted in today's presentation. But also gave you a, and don't laugh at me, a big spreadsheet. This means I can read this even without my glasses on, spreadsheet. And this is a comparison of the top ten urban libraries in Iowa. And for those of you that were here last year, I gave this in a much smaller form. It was really hard to read. But I've, I've highlighted and color-coded, in the yellow sections, we are in tenth place. We're the fifth-largest metropolitan library in the state, and yet we're, when I got here, everybody goes, well, at least you're behind Sioux Falls. Well, not anymore. We're in last place, solid. But I wanted you to have this, so you could see where we compare to our peers within the state. And on this last slide on the screen, it just tells you, in funding, we're in last, printed materials, we're in last, total items owned per capita, we're in last, staffing level, we're eighth, and FTEs. MLS is a master-level library servants librarian. We are in last. We have the fewest of the, the group. And then you can kind of see, there's a, an awesome theme here of where we are. I can tell you have twenty-nine point five people that are dedicated to the library and are doing the best they can with what resources we have. You can see by the numbers that we have there in front of you what we've been able to do this year. As a lot of you might remember, we closed six hours during the week, Wednesdays and Thursdays nights, because of budget cuts last year. That has had an impact on us and our public. But we're still one hour above losing accreditation, so we're very happy that we're, we're still accredited, and we're moving forward.
Excuse me, you have to be open sixty hours then, or?
Sixty-one hours, and we're at sixty-two right now.
Oh, sixty-two.
So Sharon, did I make the fifteen-minute timeline you gave me there?
You did very well. Questions from everyone else? Mrs. Klein?
How many of your employees live in the city?
I would say about half. I, I don't have an actual number.
Could you get that for me?
Certainly, I'll send it to all of you.
And do you live in the city?
I do not.
You do not? Okay. I have another question. I read an article that libraries across the nation are changing, and they are moving away from a sole focus on books, which, from your presentation, we can see that's happening here too. In, in these craft situations, I also know that sometimes you have fully accredited library science people working in these craft areas. Is that an area where you could consider future personnel as not having those kinds of high degrees and, and maybe reflecting in the wage? You know, like, for example, you have Christmas decorations that you make for the little kids. It's not necessarily, you know, important to have a library science degree doing that. And I noticed that one of your biggest things was the little succulent plants that you did. That was the biggest attendant thing, or one of them. Wouldn't just offloading that and asking a nursery to come in and, and do something like that, wouldn't that be cost-effective compared to having all of these high-paid personnel doing these things?
Well, let me address, you had a couple of questions in there.
Okay.
First of all, yes. Whenever I see an MLS librarian doing something that another staff member can do, I'm encouraging that. And I've, we only have three other librarians other than myself, so I, I tell them all the time, hand that off to somebody. The succulent event actually is in a partnership with the brewery and the nursery, and there's no librarians that work on that. It's only our marketing department. And the nice part about that is it's sold out, and it, there is a fee for it, but we get a third of that fee for our friends' organization, so we don't use any MLSs. They, they actually partner up, and we make about a thousand dollars every event. So it's a really good marriage. But yes, contract negotiations are open now. I'm looking for another classification of employees, so we can do, many of our peer libraries have multiple levels, and they actually have salary ranges, and those are two things that I'm going to be pushing for.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, Director Nielsen, I had asked you a few questions earlier, and I wanted to refer to that. I copies, I make copies and put them on other councilperson's desks there, and we're the fifth-largest population-wise in the state of Iowa, and we're tied for second for the largest geographical city in the state of Iowa. But yet, we've got twelve out of twenty-eight markers here that put us at tenth, and then we've got seven more out of the twenty-eight that are in the range of seventh to ninth rating. Okay? And so my questions are directed at, how do we improve so that we become at least a fifth? And I would say somewhere between second and fifth, given the fact of our geographical size. So how much money do we need to spend so we can get to that category of around five? For example, materials? And then another question is, ours have been shut down over time. What does it take to get us fully opened again? So just start with.
Well, I'm cheating, because you called me and asked me these questions about five hours ago, and I have them written out in front of me, so I can give you the answers.
Are they on this sheet?
They are in your sheet. So I'll just explain what you have in the sheet. The very first thing is, if you recall, we closed six hours last year because of budget cuts. That would take forty-eight hours of personnel time to reopen. And that averages about a thousand dollars an hour, so the answer's forty-eight thousand dollars. We do have multiple different levels of, but I just averaged that for you, for that answer. To be average in staffing, we need twenty additional employees. Now, remember, we're only twenty-nine employees today, so that would be a dramatic change in where we are. Eight of them would be librarians. That's how far behind the average we are with MLS librarians. Your materials question is, is, is pretty obvious. Take one-point-seven million dollars to get us to fifth, and three-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars of that would just be for materials alone. Again, just like I said last year, it's very important to realize, we haven't had an increase on materials for twelve years. So even a static line with minimal inflation is dropping. Price is going up, but to get to that fifth place, that's where we'd be. And then lastly, I added this one to those questions. Again, with the bookmobile, we'd need two additional staff members, people that could actually drive the bookmobile.
And Mr. Nielsen, the one-point-seven million, that includes all the things that are listed above that line?
Yes.
It would include reopening on Wednesday and Thursday, it would include a?
And the materials budget is in that number. It is an additive number. It's, it's one-point-seven less three-seventeen.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
Director Nielsen, so of your twenty-nine-plus positions, are those all currently filled? Have they been filled for the last twelve months?
We've had all but one filled the last twelve months. I've been doing two roles. We're finalizing the hiring of that person right now.
How long had that position been open?
I left it open for a year last year at this time, because of our budget situation with the rollback. I didn't want to hire somebody and then let them go. So I've been both the director and the head of adult services. Two months ago, I went ahead and we've gone through the interviewing. I have the last two interviews on Wednesday.
God bless you for doing that. On your slide, under your gather, you've got the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand visits, thirty-nine thousand cardholders. Do you have a way of knowing how many of those are Waterloo residents? Are those all Waterloo residents, or do you know that?
No, no. Those are all the, if you live in other cities in Iowa, because of the law here, you can get a Waterloo card. I can give you, I'll send you out an exact number of how many people live in Waterloo if you'd like.
That'd be great.
I know Mrs. Klein had an answer, so I'll get both of those to you. But no, we, we have all that data. We don't share our personnel database, of course.
Yeah.
But I can tell you exactly how many are in Waterloo.
Okay. And then finally, it seems like maybe you're doing some things that I would not have necessarily associated with a library, some of the activities you're offering. And, and you keep using the term free, that they're free, but obviously, they're not free, because the taxpayers are paying for them. But I know you're, you're saying they're free to the end-user.
The end-user can use any of our resources, with very few exceptions. Printing, we do charge some, but all of our events are free to, to come and use. There's no charge to use the computers.
Right.
Or to check out a book.
So if you had to choose, and hopefully, we won't get to this point, but if you had to choose between losing your accreditation or charging for some of these activities that are maybe not library original or library-centric, if you, if you follow my question, would you, if you had to choose between those two, what would you choose to do?
If I was put in that position, I'd choose option C. I'd resign. It's against what librarians believe in. We're the cornerstone of the community. It's there for everybody. A lot of affluent people don't use it, some do, but it's the only place in the community to come and get free resources for the people that need that. So if I had to say lose accreditation, that would be a huge black eye on the community.
Right.
But to charge services for some, some of our services, this is the first time the people have read in English. This is the first time they're trying to get their very first email, and they may be forty-two years old, they know nothing about computers, they're coming to our classes. We hook up on their first Gmail account. To charge for that would just be wrong.
Well, I'm not talking about those kind of activities. I'm talking about some of the other activities you're doing, where you're almost competing with the private sector. And you're doing it, again, at a free rate.
Well, the, the private sector debate has been in the library world for a long time, like, on DVDs. You know, we, we check out DVDs for free, you go to Redbox and get that for free. A lot of people can't afford Redbox, and so that debate's been there for twenty or thirty years. Most of those, there are some libraries that have chosen to charge a dollar a night for DVDs.
Thank you.
Can I interject? You've got, if, if one of your meeting spaces is used by another organization, do they pay a rental fee?
Most of the people that we give, allow them to use, they can't use it for regular meetings, okay? And it has to be a nonprofit. So we don't have profit organizations. We turn down probably ten or twenty. We could develop a fee schedule for that, but since we only have two rooms, we have never done that here.
Okay, so any nonprofit can use one of your rooms right now at no charge?
At no charge, as long as they don't have regular meetings in there, and they don't sell anything.
Okay. Okay.
And they have to allow anybody to come into the room.
Okay.
It can't be a closed club.
Gotcha. Okay.
They do have to allow anybody to come into the room. Is that what I heard you say?
They have to, yes.
Oh. What was your question?
They do have to allow anybody to come into the room.
Yeah, it has to be an open meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chairperson.
Is there anyone else that hasn't had a chance to ask a question yet?
I have a question.
I think Mrs. Klein was first, and then Mr. Morrissey.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jacobs.
Director Nielsen, so the eighteen thousand dollars in double time, when, when we, like, what's the event that would cause us to pay double time for employees?
Well, again, thank you, because we, I answer this question every year, and I'm sure it was answered before. We don't pay double time. Our contract says anybody that works on Sunday gets two for one hours. So if they work for four hours, they get eight hours of pay. I only get to use them for eighty, or forty hours a week if they're a full-time employee. So if they work on Sunday, I only get thirty-two hours the rest of the week. So we're not paying double time. It's in, in the contract, for Sunday hours.
It's just been brought to my attention, well, at the end of the half-hour. Can we ask a real quick question for both you and Mr. Morrissey? One quick one.
My quick question is this, I, I heard you say that you have teaching sewing skills? That is in direct competition with private industry. I know several people that offer classes in that around town.
In teaching what?
Like sewing, teaching sewing skills. Shouldn't we charge for that?
Our idea, just.
Not really a library thing.
On the Makerspace, it wasn't that we were supposed to teach it. It was about letting people come in and be creative on their own. We do a handful of classes on our own. Many of those classes are done by volunteers. We don't, we don't put on the classes, we just provide the space. And so we have a sewing club, and a crocheting club, a knitting club. Those are all done by volunteers. A quilting club is all there. So we're not, we're not doing much of the teaching anymore. It's just providing that space. But when we started, we did some, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
Madam Chairperson, Director Nielsen, this, I mean, what the Waterloo Public Library provides is pretty evident, it's a public service. It's paid for out of the monies that the people of Waterloo want to give and do give, so that we have a public library. And it'd be great to have, just like our fire department, a, a service that is second to none in the state of Iowa. And so it, it, my understanding is that in doing this budget, you were asked, or you're talk, it's talked about, you just having a base budget, or a flat budget, where there's no increases. And that bothers me, given the fact of the statistics that you got here that have shown over the last more than decade, we've steadily gone down. So I'm going to be asking, what kind of budget, what kind of increase needs to happen so that we steadily build up, so that in the next ten years, we become the next, we become between the second and fifth best public library in the state of Iowa? So that's what I will be asking from you, Director Nielsen. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. Very comprehensive presentation. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm sure you'd be available if we had more questions, right?
I'm always here.
Okay, good. Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda is the Cultural and Arts Department by Kent Schinkel. And where, there's Kent. Did she... Did you even retrieve the budget on the... Oh. For each of the departments? Because I asked where the budget was. It was marked. It's attached.
Yeah, it's exploded.
Okay, so I... I'll have to go back. Hello, sir. Welcome.
Hello.
Glad to have you. We'll turn it right over to you because we're a little behind, and you have about a half an hour.
All right. I will try to move relatively swiftly.
Thank you.
But hopefully communicate what we offer our community and can answer questions about our request for funding for this coming fiscal year. Just to start with, good place is always the mission. And the mission of the Center for the Arts is to stimulate inquiry, provoke dialogue, and connect people through the arts. It's kind of just a fancy way of saying that we provide cultural experiences and opportunities and arts programming to our community. Just a little bit of background. Our city's cultural programs go back to at least 1947 when those programs were housed in the old Washington School.
Is that a picture of the Washington School?
That is one of the artworks from our collection by Paul Smith depicting that school. In 1966, or at least leading up to that, our community decided to invest in a recreation and arts complex, and they were able to raise funds to support such an endeavor. And in 1966, the center at our current site was opened. Since then, it's been grown through a number of different additions. And I think it's kind of interesting also to know that at the time, when we had a recreation and arts center, that was a very novel sort of approach to bring all these hobby groups, sports, parks, leisures, leisure together. And in fact, people from all over the country traveled to our community to study this new model. We've kind of evolved since then. We've grown, and the size of those programs and operations outgrew our facility, and we were restructured. But there are recreation and arts centers all over the country now, and in part, that's due to what was happening here in our community. In 1968, our Junior Art Gallery program was established, which is a cornerstone of what we do, and it reflects our community's commitment to youth art education, investing in our youth, and giving them opportunities in arts and culture. Again, successively, additional wings completed, and in 2008, there was a major expansion with the addition of our Phelps Youth Pavilion, which put our award-winning Junior Art Gallery program up on the main floor. There's a great history of community investment in and ownership over the arts center. And again, kind of an overview of what we do, we operate under the auspices of the Center for the Arts, and it is governed by the Cultural and Arts Commission. And we provide free and low-cost cultural opportunities and amenities for citizens of all ages. And in light of the last conversation, yes, we do offer free programming, but where possible and appropriate, we do charge for programs that do have costs associated, particularly for classes and workshops and so forth. But we do our best to make sure that there aren't financial barriers that preclude our citizens from participating fully. And I think sometimes the arts are viewed as something that's purely for leisure, for enjoyment, and I think certainly that's an important aspect of what arts and culture bring to the community. They're certainly an indicator of the health, overall health of a community. And... But it goes well beyond that. Our impact isn't just to provide these opportunities for people. It also supports other missions and goals of the city, including overall quality of life and also providing economic impacts in that we draw visitors to the area who come to our community, spend money, support businesses, make our community a place where people want to live and work, where employers can recruit a quality workforce because these kinds of amenities are here. So it's not just a place to live. It's a place to really have a quality life. Just a few benchmarks of what we do and how it impacts the community. In the last fiscal year, we served 191,675 visitors, and that's actually up 34,000 people over the previous year, or 21%. Don't ask me how we did that. But we, in part, it's because we hosted or presented 1,757 programs and events, and that's an increase of 35% or 450 more events than we did the year before. In our Phelps Youth Pavilion, we served 24,863 children and their parents in that space.
Is that an increase as well, do you know?
That's an increase of 10% over the previous year, and those numbers have been continuing to climb each year rather steadily, at least for the past few years. We presented 36 exhibitions at the Center for the Arts and at other locations in the community. And this particular year, we added 150 works of art to the permanent collection. That number fluctuates greatly from year to year because our collection is grown primarily through gifts to the collection, and so that's a little bit dependent on what artworks are... or gifts are offered to our collection. Just kind of an overview of some more specific types of programs and services that we offer. We have a number of gallery spaces. We try to maximize the art facility and display art in every space available. We also offer classes, workshops, and lectures, musical concerts, dance and theatrical performances, festivals and cultural celebrations, and also offer facilities for civic functions, private, and community events. And one of the things I think is really special and important about the Center for the Arts, not only the fact that our community has a really stellar facility and program. I travel quite a bit to work with other communities, art centers, museums, and it's... Ours really stands up and surpasses most of those. We hear that quite often. And another thing that I think is really particularly special is that not only is our facility an art center or an art museum, it's also a community center. It's viewed as a place where everyone in the community is welcome, and they come for so many different reasons. I've worked in other settings where it was... The facilities and programming were totally focused on the arts, and I've also had the opportunity to visit other museums and do an internship at a major museum where that was the case. And I find that it's... Sometimes that can be a little bit frustrating in that you end up preaching to the masses. You are serving those people who already recognize and appreciate the value of art and already make that a part of their lives. But we have the opportunity in this facility to kind of rub shoulders with everyone virtually in the community. Most everyone in our community passes through our doors at some time throughout the year, and they are exposed to arts and culture. They have the opportunity to explore, and it's really exciting to see people really get inspired and interested in something that they had no idea that they were going to experience or that they would enjoy or value. So we have the opportunity to be very impactful in a way that a lot of other art centers are not, and in part, it's because of the wide range of programming that we facilitate there. Not only our own programs, but by having spaces available for nonprofit organizations, for individuals to hold family celebrations and gatherings, and particularly, a lot of the things that happen in our community with nonprofits, they would be hard-pressed to do or to be as effective as they are without the kind of facility available that we have here. A lot of these... A lot of nonprofits hold fundraisers at the Center for the Arts. So if their budgets, if they didn't have a place like the Center for the Arts to make those things happen, those things... Their budgets would be impacted, and their effectiveness would as well. Again, we try to serve a very broad audience, very young through seniors, and we also try to be accessible to all regardless of income. So a lot of our exhibits are, for the most part, free, many free concerts and events with the costs covered in a variety of ways, through sponsorships, through concessions and so forth. We have a... We do have an admission fee for our children's galleries, hands-on experiential galleries, but we try to make sure, again, that there aren't barriers to participation through generous Dollar Day program. Every third Thursday, admission is only $1, and we're very busy, so people really appreciate and utilize that opportunity. And our Sunday admissions are reduced as well. We have tuition scholarships for our art classes and many of our programs. As I said, generally there are charges for those, but again, we want to make sure that there are not barriers to participation. So if someone cannot afford that, we do offer tuition scholarships as well as participate in the Keycard Program and the Blue Star Program for military families. And then also, to make sure that we are providing, supporting our community's educational programs, the schools, our daycares and preschools, we have obtained support to help subsidize those tours so that preschoolers get the chance to visit and tour the facility, even if they don't have the opportunity to come on their own. And we've also gotten support to help offset the cost of busing students for... to experience the art center. Again, just an overview of some of the special youth events that we have. Holiday arts programs are very, very popular. Sometimes 200 to 300 people participate in these programs. Also, in addition to having a facility and programs that I think we can kind of brag about, I think some people may not realize that we have an incredible permanent collection, one that is of interest, not only... It's a source of pride for our community, but it's also of interest to people outside of our community. It's... I think some people would be surprised to know that we've had people fly in from both coasts, all over the country, or drive in to see our specific permanent collections. We have Midwest art, which reflects our region. One of the highlights of that collection is art by Grant Wood, Iowa's most famous artist. We have American Decorative Arts, which is in large part a pottery, and ceramics is one of our strongest studio arts programs, so it's inspirational for those students. We have public art located in spaces throughout the community, and then also an international folk art collection, the largest portion of which is Haitian art. And the Center for the Arts holds the largest public collection of Haitian art in the whole Again, we are bringing people together through the arts, so we serve as a community gathering place, celebrating arts and culture. So some major annual events that you may be familiar with are Culture Fest, which takes place on the first Thursday of every April. It's a celebration of cultural diversity that we present in conjunction with the Waterloo Schools. It includes displays, dancing, cultural dances, singing, and my favorite part is ethnic food samples. We have... We do a Fiesta program, a celebration of Latino culture. It's kind of moved around dates over the past few years, and this year it will be held in July. Stem and Stein, a food, beer, and wine festival. That's a big fundraiser for our Friends Organization. River Loop Rhythms, free concerts, musical concerts along the river. Added this past year, Cinema on the Cedar, a series of outdoor movies for children and families. Every year, we offer a Holiday Arts Festival where approximately 60 artists from the region come in. We kind of clear out all the galleries. They set up and show and sell their wares. So it's an opportunity to support artists in the community as well as allow people the opportunity to take art home for their own collections and as gifts. The Mayor's Fireworks Celebration is hosted at the amphitheater, and we participate in the World's Greatest Spring Break Program, which provides activities for kids during spring break week, just a buck a kid. We try to be as effective as possible, and one of the best ways to do that is through partnerships. So we do a lot on our own, but we also work with other groups to provide arts and cultural services to the community, and this is just a very partial list. Organizational chart, we currently have 12 full-time positions. Right now, there's 11 of those that are filled. And then those are supported with a varying number of part-time employees and contractual employees that are hired to teach classes and facilitate programs. A lot of our maintenance work is done through a number of service programs. So while we hire people to be facilities managers and to oversee their work, we do have a lot of actual maintenance labor that is provided to the city at no cost, so we utilize those types of programs to the fullest extent possible. Just an overview of last year's budget performance. Our expenses were 1.15 million, and that was 89% of the approved budget. Our revenues came in at 329,000, which was 114% of the projection, and our tax support was at 827,000 or at 82% of the amount approved as part of the budget. And we look forward to continuing to serve the community in lots of new ways, exciting ways, in the coming year.
Good. Questions, Mrs. Klein?
Of course, you're going to know the question. Do you live in the city of Waterloo?
I do live in the city of Waterloo.
And how many of your employees live in the city of Waterloo?
We currently have 11 full-time employees. Six of those live in Waterloo, and actually, all six of those are homeowners.
Thank you. Other questions?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Director Schenkel was wondering, one of the things that happened last year's budget was that we lost a graphic designer position, and I'm just wondering, when you put together your budget, it probably was at the 0% level. I got it at the base level or whatever they might call it. Did that include getting that position back in your full-time equivalency positions? Because I don't see it on your organizational chart.
No, we were asked to submit a flat budget request, which, at least initially, which we did. And I don't know if everybody recalls, but while the full-time graphics or the digital arts manager position was eliminated last year during the budget process, we did receive kind of a little bit... Some backfill to help support a part-time graphic designer through the Council Discretionary Hotel Motel Grant. So that is... Currently, we have a part-time graphic designer, and that's funded with funds that were received as part of that grant. So that... A part-time graphic designer is included in this budget request, funded by an additional request for a hotel motel grant funds. Ideally, while, you know, we're making this work, that's probably not the best way to fund a salary position or a staffing position through grants, just because those come and go, so it's difficult.
Director Schenkel, should that be a full-time position?
Ideally, it should be a full-time position.
Okay. And I was also wondering, I mean, you have such... I mean, you do great with what you have there, and you need to be commended, congratulated for that, Director Schenkel. But at the same time, I'm just wondering, it seems though people are leaving, is there any issue with the pay scale that detract people or that have people moving to other positions that pay better? or that have people moving to other positions that pay better? Is there that issue at all?
We, for at least the past five years, we have received either a no increase budget or experienced budget reductions. And the way we've absorbed those, we've tried to do that without impacting any of the services that we provide. And the way we've done that is kind of to roll back salaries, if you will, by taking advantage of times when a staff member would leave. And so, when that position was open, we've kind of rolled those back. We haven't increased wages. And we are really starting to see some impact of that in that our wages aren't competitive with, especially as, you know, in light of our low unemployment rate. We are seeing that with both our kind of base-level employees who work on a part-time basis. We're finding that we have extreme competition when they can go even to a fast-food restaurant or any retail establishment and make more money than we're paying them. Even though we have a wonderful work environment, you know, dollars do talk in the end. And then in terms of our salaried employees, you know, I think we are also starting to see that as well, where we have people that really don't want to leave, but they have opportunities to make more money in another setting. And in fact, even other city departments, you know, I have some employees that I'm in danger of losing to other city employees because, you know, even the wages in our department are relatively low and they're not climbing.
And along that, with that, I was wondering if you would, and I don't know if you want to give this to everybody else, but I'd just like to see how much additional to your budget request would be for adding in that graphic artist as well as upgrading your pay scale so that you believe that they are more attractive and will keep people at the Center for the Arts. If you could do that, that would be my request, Director Schenkel.
There's, if there's a request and interest in that, I would be happy to look at that and put together figures.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson. I also would like to compliment you, Kent, that, you know, you came in under expenses, over on revenue, under on tax support. And I'm reminded that over the years, as we've asked department heads to come in with suggestions and ideas to operate in a more austere manner, you almost always, and maybe always, had some real workable suggestions. So, you should be complimented for that. Of your positions, how many of those were open this last year? Was there just the one?
I believe, well, I think we've had three that were open and that we've had transitions in in the last year, three of the full-time positions.
Okay. And they were open for part of the year, the whole year?
They were open for part of the year. And that is another challenge for us when we have a relatively small staff. And I, you know, which at full employment, we can make it work. But when we have any openings, it's very difficult to maintain operations. And it is with the civil service kind of system and the length of time that it takes just to go through the process. Typically, a vacant position is open from four to six months. And that's been exacerbated for us more recently with our wage levels. You know, in the last few times that we've advertised positions, we're seeing a significant decrease in the number of applicants. And in some cases, we've had to advertise a position for a second time to try and actually get someone interested in a job that, you know, has, is maybe not competitive in terms of pay. And a lot of our jobs as well end up being evening and weekend hours, which also is not as attractive to a larger applicant pool.
When was the last time you had an increase on your rates for your rooms?
Probably about four or five years ago. You know, we have made some adjustments in terms of how we collect. And also, you know, some things like we charge a fee for food because there's additional costs associated with cleanup and that sort of thing. But in terms of our overall fee schedule for room rentals, it's probably been four to five years.
I mean, you've got a real unique setting there that you really ought to take advantage of it. And then finally, do you, I know you've got a great Friends group. Do you make good use of volunteers? Are you able to make use of volunteers?
We do utilize Friends and other volunteers to the extent that we can. We don't have a volunteer coordinator. But, so we utilize and coordinate those volunteers to the extent that we can. And in, we use, as I say, we do utilize our Friends group. So, they do provide additional staff support in addition to raising some additional funds. You know, they are our membership and financial support organization. So, the funds that they raise don't flow through this budget. There's a separate 501(c)(3), but they raise about $40,000 a year to supplement this budget. So, it adds additional bang in terms of the programs and services that we can offer to our community.
Thank you.
May I ask, Mr. Schenkel, you're saying your wage rate is not competitive perhaps right now. Is that union? Are they, is it under contract? Or how are those wages established?
We don't have any union employees in our department.
Okay.
And the last time that there was a wage study, the Center for the Arts was not included in that. The last citywide kind of comparison among other cities did not include our department.
And why was that?
It was done by the HR department and, or Clerk's Office, and it just wasn't included. I think in part because not all cities have the same type of department that we do or the same type of facilities.
So, your wages haven't been significantly altered for, you just get the annual raise that we allow to every non-union?
For the most part, yes.
Okay, okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. You do an amazing job. I'm liaison to your board, and I am continually amazed at the additional events and everything you've got going there. So, you're, you're working fast.
We love doing it. And again, we feel so fortunate to have a community that has invested in the facility that we have and people who support the collection and the type of city support that we do have because it isn't necessarily across the board in all other communities. So, thank you also for that.
Good job, good job. Thank you very much. Okay, on to our third and last budget presentation on the MIS Department by Chris Youngblood.
All right. Good afternoon. Chris Youngblood, IT Director for the city. I don't have a whole lot of slides here, so we'll get through these and then open it up for questions. Mission statement for our department is just to provide the highest quality services while advancing the use of technology to improve excellence and efficiencies and employ productivity through innovative solutions. Our staffing, we are pretty lean. There's two of us in the MIS Department, myself, and then I have a programmer analyst. And then I also oversee the public access studio. So, we have a cable TV production coordinator and a production assistant. At the bottom there, I do have a few figures that I've gathered over the last year that just show some of the other cities in Iowa comparable size that do show that they are using a larger number of employees. We do have a larger number of employees. But I think for what we have, we do, we do a really good job and are able to maintain a lot of services for the number of people that we have. Our customers. We do support over 500 full-time employees in approximately 35 departments or divisions throughout the city. We provide service to over 25 buildings and locations throughout the city. So, we often have to go out to those, to those locations to do troubleshooting or training or provide services. And lastly, but definitely probably the most important is our services are also, we're, we provide, hopefully, we provide some services to the citizens of Waterloo because we do, you know, we need to make sure that all of our employees are, our number one job is to make sure our employees throughout the city are able to do their job. And a lot, most of our employees throughout the city are really dedicated to the citizens of Waterloo. So, if they're not able to get on their computer, get on the network or provide services, then that hurts the citizens. So, obviously, citizens of Waterloo are definitely one of our customers. Some of the different things that technology services that our department provides, management of vendor contracts and performance, IT assets, management and planning. One of the most important things is network security. That's a huge issue these days, making sure that data is secure. Also very important is flexible and secure anywhere access. More and more employees these days are out in the field with a tablet or laptop or their iPhone and need to have access to city data. So, providing them that access is very important. We do end-user support, phone support. We're able to remote in, in a lot of cases, if there are issues, so that we don't have to travel to all those different buildings all the time. Obviously, we manage the technology infrastructure throughout the city, which is, which is very vast. And then one of the newer items that's kind of become part of my department over the last year or so is geographic information systems. That's the mapping of utilities, water lines, sewer lines, the streets. We are working with Public Works to, they're mapping light poles, what type of, where the pole is at, what's, what's on the, what type of LED or what type of light is on that. So, that's, over the last several months, that's really taken off. And we have a lot of desire by different departments to get in on that. So, that's, that's growing by leaps and bounds right now. Just a little bit on the year in review. Obviously, with GIS, we did implement an enterprise-wide GIS. What we did was, we had, things were a little bit siloed, I would, I would say, over the past many years. We had different licensing, different departments using different licensing. So, what we were able to do was kind of bring that all under my department so that we've got one, basically one enterprise license for the city of Waterloo. And then we manage that and roll that out to the different departments as needed. VMware is our virtualization software. We've got about 40 servers that we maintain. About 30 to 35 of those are virtual, so we don't have to buy the equipment. We don't have to have the space for that physical box. We're able to virtualize those. So, we did a fairly major upgrade from 5.5 to 6.5 recently. So, that's, we've actually seen some benefits on that, on the way that it handles, getting a little bit technical, but in the way that it handles the memory of those servers. We've seen some benefits already from that. Wireless access points. Wireless is a huge thing these days, obviously. Everybody wants access everywhere, all the time. So, we've done some recent upgrades to our access points at City Hall, Public Works, Hazmat and Waste Management recently. We've also installed or helped to install security cameras at the fire station headquarters. We did work with a vendor on that, but we were able to save the fire department some money by running a lot of the cable ourselves. So, that was, that helped bring them to a kind of a dollar amount where they were able to pay for those cameras there. Website. We continually upgrade or make changes to the website, getting new stuff out there. One of the things in 2018 that we, we rolled out was citizen problem reporting. In 2018, we had about 284 submissions. Those are things like, you know, there may be a large pothole on the street or perhaps the, you know, they weren't happy with, you know, the way the snow was plowed. We get items for code enforcement. We get items for human rights that come in through that. So, it's just another avenue for citizens to go online, submit their, their issue that they have. And then we kind of dole that out and make sure that the correct person is getting that handled. We also look at copier and printer replacement. Kind of taking a new, kind of taking that under my wing to really look at the costs, the long-term cost on those. When you look at the cost of a copier over five years, it's definitely not just the upfront cost, it's the per-page cost. And when you can save half a cent on a, on a color copy over the course of five years, that makes a big difference. So, those are things that we're taking a look at when we replace copiers and printers to make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck over that five years. Drone certification. We did have two members of our staff in the public access studio did become certified drone operators last year. And we're able to take over 20 hours of drone video. So, we hope to, hope to double that this year. I think it's been a big help and it will continue to be a big help to the different departments. We've done some work for Waste Management out at the sewer plant. We've done some work for planning and zoning. Getting those aerial images has, has been a big help, I think. Also, live streaming. We went live with live streaming of the council meetings, planning and zoning work sessions. They're all now livestreamed on YouTube. So, anybody in the world can now see, see our meetings. There's about a 30-second delay, but they can basically see those live now. And we have had over 50,000 views on YouTube on those. Upcoming projects for this coming year is to continue to work with our fiber optic master plan. We work closely with traffic on this to expand our fiber optic network throughout the city for both traffic use, security cameras, city network use. We've got a number of buildings that we don't have access to yet that we hope to, over the next five to eight years, get access via fiber on those. GIS, we continue to expand on that. We're, will be working on some projects to map the fiber optic cabling, digitizing routes for street sweeping and plowing, for sand salt and sanitation. And then we just continue to do server and computer upgrades. We want to make sure that we're staying current. Make sure we have the best possible hardware that our employees can use. And we want to make sure that we're not using equipment that can't be serviced and supported by the vendor. So, we often have to look at what the end of life is on that equipment so that we can get that updated. At City Hall here, we'll be putting in a new uninterruptible power supply or UPS. When there is a power outage, we do have a generator, but there does need to be a slight period of time where that UPS keeps power up. Otherwise, our data center, the police data center crashes hard, and that's, that's never a good thing.
Mr. Youngblood, I apologize. We've already gone past the time. I'm going to give you about five more minutes.
Okay.
But if you would just use a couple of them, so we can still have some questions.
Yep.
Thank you.
New World is our ERP system. We do have an update, major update this year that we need to get done. I know that always makes Michelle happy, but we do need to get that done this year. And then there's just other things, infrastructure updates. We're backing up more and more data and making sure that we're able to have a recovery plan in place in case we do have a kind of a major emergency here at City Hall. Those are my slides, so I guess I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. Mrs. Klein?
My question about personnel and where they live. Do both of you live in Waterloo?
Three of the four do. I live just outside the city limits.
Three of the four, and you live outside. Okay.
Other questions? Other questions?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Morrissey.
Yes, Chris, Director Youngblood. You talked about your full-time, or FTEs, sitting there at four with two public access and two for you, the technology part of it there. What, with these different things that you're talking about, the projects and that, what would be your recommended staffing level to handle that properly? I mean, properly. I'm not talking about ideally, I'm talking about properly.
Well, as we kind of had a conversation before, with the GIS, the way that that's expanding throughout the city, I think optimally having a full-time GIS analyst or GIS specialist would be beneficial. And I think that's something that is going to be needed in the near future. Luckily, we've been able to lean on support from some expertise we have in other departments. We do have some staff in engineering that is GIS knowledgeable, so we're able to lean on that a lot. But what we don't want to do is, you know, be stealing staff or taking staff away from other departments that, you know, then they're kind of put in a hole because they don't have the staff to do that. And then I think there's just a number of other projects that having, you know, at least another halftime person on staff would help us do. You know, we've got some equipment that's sitting out at a couple of buildings that's been sitting there for, you know, a month and a half or two months. We just haven't had a chance to get out and get that installed. So that's some of the things that we run into is delay in getting, getting things installed and getting support to, we're able to handle the support that comes in on daily, that's needed on a daily basis for those emergencies, those things that are needed right away. But then that kind of puts those longer-term projects at a little bit of a disadvantage because we don't then, we can't be working on those and keep those projects moving along.
Thanks.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Youngblood. Appreciate it.
Motion adjourned.
Discussion? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
We didn't vote.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Evening and welcome to the Finance Committee of the Waterloo City Council. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of February 4, 2019 is proposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
Like to make the following travel requests. First, an approval of such. First is Ryan Anderson, Joe Schaefer and Michael Beerbauer, sewer maintenance and Alinfect ICT for the Iowa Water Environment Association Collection System Conference Review Session ABC Collection System Exam, Marshawn, Iowa, March 8, amount not to exceed $560. Next is Forrest Graves, the foreman, Todd Gady and Justin Gady, sewer maintenance for the Iowa Water Environment Association Collection System Conference in Marshawn, Iowa, March 7 and 8, 2019, with amount not to exceed $390. Next is Chief, Fire Chief Pat Trelor for the Iowa Association of Professional Fire Chiefs Spring Conference in Ames, Iowa, April 3 and 4, 2019, the amount not to exceed $180. Next is Fire Marshal Chris Ferguson for the arson canine recertification in Bismarck, North Dakota, June 3 through 7, 2019, amount not to exceed $920. Next is Eric Schrader, city planner, and Adrian Miller, economic development specialist for Main Street, 2019 Board Lunches in Waterloo from January through December, 2019, amount not to exceed $120. Next is Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer for the Society of Land Surveyors of Iowa Annual Conference in Ames, Iowa, March 7 through 8, 2019, amount not to exceed $400. Next is Abraham Funchess, the Human Rights Director for the 2019 National Community Reinvestment Coalition Annual Conference in Washington DC from March 10 to 14, amount not to exceed $2,545. Next is Keith Caspari, the Airport Director for the calendar year 2019 Cedar Valley Coalition Trip in Washington DC, April 29 through May 1, amount not to exceed $1,800. And last is Angie Fordice, Community Development Coordinator, Anita Murfield, Administrative Secretary, and Maggie Howard Heritakis, Project Specialist for the National Community Development Association 50th Annual Conference in Jacksonville, Florida from June 17 through 23rd, 2019, with the amount not to exceed $2,840.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chairperson, pre-authorization to expend over $1,000. Airport, $3,800 plus $80 shipping and handling for urea for use on runways in icy winter weather. Airport, $3,658, requesting permission to expend $4,600 of this, including shipping and handling for the purchase of two super sacks of dry-based chemical product for air-filled deicing. So I guess it's the estimated amount of $3,658, possibly up to $4,016 is what we're asking for today. Airport, $3,074 plus $339.22 shipping and handling for two totes of 265 gallons of Cryotech E36 runway deicing fluid. Airport Police and Sanitation, $2,105 for the purchase of urea furniture. Building maintenance, $2440 for asbestos survey and collecting of samples from the interior of City Hall. Clerk Finance Department, $8,398 for the annual service for attendance enterprise software, which is the time clock for the period of April 1, 19 through March 31, 20. Engineering, $4,127.80 for the AutoCAD Infrastructure Design Suite software support. Engineering, $7,052.65 for the Elk Run Road resurfacing. Garage, $3,150 plus $100 shipping and handling for the Rex Roth hydraulic pump for the 193B08 street department truck. Housing Authority, $13,865 for the new commercial water heater for Ridgeway Towers. Leisure Services, $20,963 for 56 trees to be supplied and planted at South Hills Golf Course. Leisure Services, $16,796.90 for 42 trees to be supplied and planted along Airport Boulevard and Betsworth Drive. Public Works, $1,900 to install new and replace existing sprinklers in various areas of the Public Works building. Sewer Department, $36,036 to purchase the Flight 3202 fluid pump. And last, Traffic, $56,176 to purchase 31 edge-lit LED signs, rigid mounting hardware and safety cable.
Second.
Questions? Discussion?
Madam Chairperson?
Yes, sir.
On number 14, I just was wondering why we are doing the asbestos survey with sample collections in City Hall.
Who wants to address that? Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. I saw Michelle jump up here, so I thought maybe she wanted to answer it. But we have some areas primarily along the window areas that has some flaking materials and all that, so we were concerned about it possibly being asbestos-containing materials. As you may be aware, asbestos is not dangerous until it becomes in a friable condition. So when we started looking into that, we did have someone walk through, just kind of do a preliminary look at the materials. We believe there could be some asbestos there. So this is to move ahead with a formal asbestos survey and collecting of samples throughout City Hall to look at the possibility of having asbestos in here and what we may need to remove in the future.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chairperson, number 17 for engineering, the expense for the Elk Run Road resurfacing. Is that just for the design work for that or?
Jamie Knutson, City Engineer. Two years ago, the city of Waterloo had agreed to go ahead and pay for our portion of the Donald and North Elk Run Road intersection. The county was doing the project and this $7,000 is our cost for the construction of the overlay in the intersection.
Which had been a previously approved.
Which has been previously approved, yes.
Yes, Mrs. Weeden, you had a question?
I do. So the very first pre-oth for the airport, we had actually asked for that amount to be increased, not to exceed 4,300, and that got on your attachment, but apparently we forgot to update the agenda itself. So if we could just update that amount from the $3,800 plus shipping and handling to $4,300 total.
And that's, which number, that's number 10?
And, yes, I'm sorry.
So it should be included to what?
$4,300 total.
And then as long as you're there, on number 11, is it the 36 or the 4,000?
That one I don't recall changing, but perhaps we did.
It is $4,016 total, which includes the shipping and handling.
So, Madam Chairperson, I'd like to amend the pre-authorization request that I made. Number 10 to then the amount estimated for the airport would be $4,300 plus $80 shipping and handling for the urea for use on runways in icy winter weather. Then number 11, the amount that's going to be requested would be the $4,016 as opposed to the $3,658.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chairperson, then we have to vote on all of them.
Yeah.
I just had a quick question. Item number 28, that $10,000 in forfeiture funds to the current year operation, is that normal? Oh, I'm sorry.
Don't take away my thunder here. Okay, we have the pre-oth over 1,000. Any other further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, let me get to the budget line items to be amended. Number 25, to approve the project budget amendment for the Plant Waterloo Tree Replacement Project funded with a $20,000 donation from the Young Family Foundation to include additional funding from the sale of trees in the estimated amount of $5,000 as submitted by Leisure Services. Number 26, approve the project budget amendment to use funds received from the sale of ash logs for the purchase of replacement trees in the amount of $16,796.90 as submitted by Leisure Services. Number 27, approve the budget amendment to use Ridgeway Towers fund balance in the amount of $13,865 to replace a hot water heater as submitted by the Housing Authority. And finally, 28, approve the project budget amendment to use $10,000 in forfeiture funds for current year operation as submitted by the Police Department.
Second.
Discussion? Yes, sir.
Madam Chairperson, I just had a question about item number 28. If that is a typical procedure that we use forfeiture funds into the general operating budget, is the way I read that?
Yes. Chief Trelka, would you like to address that, please?
Dan Trelka, Police Chief. I believe we've done this before and we had some unexpected expenses that we're going to utilize the money for. Somebody hit the gate out at the training center, the fence drove a car right through it. We didn't identify who it was, so need to repair that. And also some advertising for police recruits. And I'm happy to say it appears our targeted efforts generated 161 applicants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, as in accounts payable dated February 11, 2019, in the amount of $1,589,149.20, we are to receive, place on file and forward to the full council.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, does anyone want to adjourn all this fund?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.